Great. So are all our attendees already in? Or are they, do we need to give them a minute?
No, they're under.
Okay, great. All right, so we will reopen the public session of our school committee meeting. We were just in executive session. Per Governor Baker's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public is not allowed to physically access this school committee meeting, but it can be viewed live on SCTV, Channel 14, and through the webinar link, the Zoom link on our meeting agenda, and then also watched on our YouTube page. We'll start with a pledge.
Very good.
Thanks, we're back in our regular room. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. We will start off with the reporting statement. If anyone is making an audio or video recording of the meeting, can you please raise your hand by the raised hand feature so I can notify the public about open meeting law? Do you have anyone recording today? Mackenzie Ryan. Gotcha, thank you. Mackenzie from Enterprise is going to be making a recording. And that looks like it. Now, can you start us with our mission and vision?
Absolutely. Falmouth Public Schools mission. The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals of curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Falmouth Public Schools' vision. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them. Thank you.
So we have a special item not on agenda because if we put it on the agenda, it wouldn't have been a surprise. Today is election day, as everybody in town knows, and as we're all wearing stickers, which means our next meeting will have different members. Here, take it away.
Okay. It would make sense when I'm going to read to you in open and required.
Oh, yeah, we're getting stuck in there.
That one says K-12. Okay, here's another. That one says Falmouth. Okay, so John, thank you for your commitment over the years to our group, the Falmouth School Committee. We have been honored to work with you and we wish you well in your retirement from the committee as you have served in two capacities, as a member of our board, as our representative here, and on the Cape Cod Collective, where you were the chairman of the board for a few years. We hope you will enjoy wearing our gift of these two hats.
Thanks, John. It's kind of nice to know you've had a lot of years that you've given to the committee. Thank you very much.
And I'm appreciative to the town voters that got to be the opportunity and as all the teachers and support staff for many a major and to the students of Falmouth, you can accomplish anything. And I wish you all the best in doing this meeting, but thank you. And have a good next year.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, sir. Good stuff. Okay, next up is public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to two minutes in length and due to open meeting law. The committee cannot take action on public comment. For items on the agenda, the chair can accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. And you can always send your feedback to us at our school committee website address, which you can find on the website, it's just schoolcommittee@k12.us. All right, I already see hands popping up for public comment.
So I found that the people that had their hands raised above the top, they don't stay out of medical order.
Oh, so they're in the order that they raised.
Yes. Yeah, so I used to have it as the same for Sue Rivell Young and then Teri Altschmidt.
Thank you so much.
And I'll keep the time.
I appreciate it. Can we promote Sue so we can get from her?
Hi.
Hi, Sue.
Hi, thank you very much. As a 27-year veteran of teacher in the Falmouth Public Schools and an officer in the FEA, I feel it's very important for this school committee to know that the morale in the Falmouth Public Schools right now is very low. Teachers, TAs, nurses, department heads, all of our FEA members have given so much to make school work and keep things as normal as possible for our students since last March. But as we start to close out this school year, we feel like the rugs are being pulled out from under us again for there are major changes being implemented next year. Positions are being cut, people are losing their jobs. Others are being shuffled around to different positions. All of this makes people feel sad, angry, and even ill. Dedicated staff members feel disrespected. Your committee and the superintendent make statements that you know how hard we've worked and hear our concerns and frustrations. You appreciate all that we do. You can put those sentiments into action by allowing next year to be a catch-up year to help make up for the disruptions and irregularities of the past year and a half. We understand that enrollment is down, but what if that is seen as an opportunity to do more for the students instead of less? And short class sizes are small at all levels, so students feel more connected to their teachers. Instead of decreasing the staff in PE Health Department, keep the new elementary health position and the full-time PE teachers at East Falmouth and T-Ticket. The staff you have now can provide extra PE and health classes to help students' social, emotional well-being and physical fitness. Instead of also decreasing the staff in the art and music departments, keep the current staff levels and offer additional music and art at all levels to help kids express themselves creatively. Hire the full-time motivated and talented teacher at Morse Pond so qualified 5th and 6th graders can experience the team program. Hire a full-time librarian for Lawrence School instead of also leaving that position unfilled again. Continue to support the importance of reading and safe, effective research for 7th and 8th graders. These are just some suggestions. There is money available to use for such purposes in the American Rescue Plan Act. Falmouth is slated for $1.5 million in extra funds. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Next, we have Teri Altschmidt. Can you promote her so we can hear her public comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I have my timer, so I won't go over. My name is Teri Altschmidt. I am the co-chair of the CPAC for Falmouth. I am also employed for children's mental health. I want to say that I was going over the issues with diversity and inclusion in this district and the fact that I've seen a letter that the district, along with the police department in the town and the school committee issued letters in May of 2020 regarding the diversity, inclusion, and racism issues. And here it is, May 2021, and I don't see anything that's changed. I don't see the trauma being addressed for the BIPOC community in regards to the trauma of seeing a black man killed on live TV. And I think the district needs to acknowledge that when it made the paper of the disparity in children of color being suspended, that was our version of the Chauvin trial. That was the aha moment, that it's under the light, but yet we're still waiting for results. And I think just looking at the school committee right now at this point, people will see there is no diversity and there is no inclusion. One person of color on an entire community does not represent Falmouth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Okay. Thanks for joining us. We're going to move on to the COVID update. Do we have, oh, we do. There's Scott.
Guys, hear me okay?
Hi, Scott, how are you?
Can you hear me okay, everybody, all right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Let me share screen. Hope can you enable it? I'll be quick, I got a couple of slides.
Yep, you're all set. We just had a.
Thank you.
There you go.
So here we are with vaccinations. We're at a total of 69% of all Falmouth residents have had at least one dose. We know they'll get their second. That represents, now that the eligibility dropped to 12, that represents about 77% of all eligible people. You can see that with the 75 and older, we're above 95%. You know, in the 90s, for 65 to 75, 50 to 64, around 80. You can see the net, in parentheses, I've got the net increase week to week. So you can see where now that the 20 to 64-year-olds, it's been over a month, that they're on to their second dose. You see the biggest increase among second doses among the 20 to 65-year-olds, which makes total sense. So 21,400 people have gotten at least their first shot in Falmouth as of May 13. So that's pretty good. I didn't think the logjam, you know, when it went to to everybody 16 and over several weeks ago, that we'd get so far, do so well. Actually, our clinics aren't being full. So like the fairgrounds, you've seen those clinics. We're only getting, we're getting not a lot of takers. So we're going to start shying away from the mask clinics just because it takes a lot of effort to put on a mask clinic and not necessarily have a lot of takers. As far as our cases, you know, we've had a good six weeks or so. Our cases over the last couple of weeks have been in the, around the 13 to 15 range. This week, we're at nine. Our case count being 1559 total since the beginning of the pandemic. So you can see the drop-off. You know, people have become vaccinated. And so we get to reap those benefits. As far as our color coding system, we went, we almost went green the week before, but we went green this past week. Percent positivity is below 2%, which is good. You can see there's only been, I think there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 communities that are still on the red. That's a pretty big drop-off over the last month or so. So, you know, we're all in a good trend with cases. In terms of vaccine clinics, we are having school-based vaccine clinics. I know Gloria wants to add to it, but at the high school, this will be for 12-plus. Well, so high school would be May 27, and then the second dose, June 17. Lawrence, the 25th. Morse Pond is also on the 25th. So that'll be school-based. And I think the information may have gone out already, but I'm not sure, could you guys handle that part? That'll be Pfizer, obviously, that's the one that's approved. And that'll be administered by Barnstable County Health, the nurses that have been running the large clinics at 4Cs and so forth. Also with the fairgrounds, before the Community Health Center took over, they'll be coming out, they'll be sending their nurses out to do that. And, you know, we'll get that done, which is great. And as far as guidance, go.
Can I ask you a question?
No, let's go.
So how does consent work for that? Like parental consent for the ones that are at school?
Yeah, there's forms, but I'll defer to Lori for the.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
So there are forms that our school county sent us, the packet. So it's online, or we can help families fill out the packet. But there is a consent form, which will keep track of it. It'll be turned in. I do, while we're on here, though, Scott was instrumental in helping us with the clinics of our schools. So thank you, Scott.
Yes, you're very welcome.
I'm just, I'm good at bringing people together, that's all. I don't do any of the hard work other than bring people together.
And if we can make sure just on our end that we have those forms in other languages, too. If you don't want to break this out.
Yes.
All right, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
Oh, no, no, no. I just, I got one more slide, we'll go quick. If you've been paying attention last week, well, actually, yes, was it Monday? All-sector-specific guidance ends on 5/29. There'll still be some DESI guidance. The details aren't out, as far as I can see all the details, anyway. The mask order is lifted with the exception of transportation, so planes, trains, and automobiles, for anybody who remembers that movie. Schools, when indoors, and healthcare and congregate settings, will still have masks, but the rest of that, the mask order is being lifted. And all-sector-specific guidance ends on 5/29. By 6:15, the governor is planning on lifting the emergency order, which, you know, that's where we're at. So I'm going to unshare. And if you guys got any questions?
Eric. Hi, Scott. I was wondering, did DESE make, no, no, the MIA make a decision on athletes wearing masks?
Yeah, outside, they took it out.
As of today, was it?
Today's the 18th, right? Yep, so yeah, it would be today.
So today, kids can play baseball, lacrosse, whatever, with no mask, right?
My daughter's softball game over at the high school, if you guys want to attend. I don't know who they're playing, but yeah, they will not have to wear it until tomorrow, today, so for tomorrow's game.
Today must be so drastic. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not easy to play sports with a mask outside, especially with the weather being close to 80 degrees.
Yeah. Yeah. The lacrosse teams went to Nantucket today. That's awesome. Isn't that cool?
That's great. So they had to wear it on the fair, but they didn't have to wear it when they got there.
Correct. You're paying attention, good.
I would send several pictures from our playgrounds. Kids were out playing with no mask.
Oh, yeah.
They didn't have to worry about being too close and all that. And so our playgrounds opened up a couple of weeks ago. And so now we're full, because of the new guidance, now we're full of our playground equipment. So drive by and see kids having fun.
I have a question about the fairgrounds. I could have find where that information is about when they're open. And I know that's probably a moot point because they're going to be closing down. But what are the hours of that site?
Well, it's going to be depends. So what happened is the Community Health Center, you guys familiar with that, Community Health Center Cape Cod, they got a lot of vaccines over the last month or so. So they basically took over the fairgrounds and they were posting it. If you went to the Town of Falmouth's website, you click on COVID, it'll say Community Health Center Vaccines. Click here and it'll give you their most recent clinics. As we're unsharing, let me go to it while we're talking. I can probably get that pretty quick. A sec, Town's website. Then I'm going to grab it, put it here, hold on one sec. So here's the Town's website. You can see Community Health Center, check availability. If you clicked on this live link, you guys see this, okay? Click on this live link. And then the next clinic is Thursday, May 20, from 11 to 2. No appointment necessary. And that one happens to be Johnson and Johnson Vaccine. But let me unshare that for a sec. But so eventually, you get no bank for the book. For last week, for example, we had a clinic from 3 to 6, no appointment necessary. We had 50 people. So it takes a lot, you know, you got 30 people running a clinic, you know, maybe 20 volunteers, 15 outside, you know, a half dozen or so inside. It's a lot of effort for, you know, 50 doses. So we're going to start gearing to smaller things. So, you know, think ideas like, you know, maybe during the fair, at the fairgrounds, we'll have a booth. Maybe we'll have a mobile unit. You know, we're working on different ideas to get it smaller, more focused, and, you know, to kind of catch, you know, again, when you're 77% vaccinated among eligible people, there's only so many people left. I mean, some people have made the decision not to. And so you're getting relatively close to saturation. So you need to just sort of fine-tune and hone, you know, where you might see there's a need and go from there.
Just to comment about that, it would have been really helpful if they had put on the sign over there where you could find the information.
Yeah.
So for that fairgrounds, I don't know if you can pass that on to anyone, but.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to do another one after tomorrow, anyway, there. Be honest with you. I mean, it should really get to a point where, you know, it takes a lot of effort on the community health centers. You know, what they'll do is they'll still have, they'll have doses, they'll just have it at their location. But I hear what you're saying.
Andrew. Yes, I think the whole idea of students being able to not have to use masks outdoors, you know, it's for playgrounds as well as outdoor learning spaces. And I think there's so much relief there, but there is still a little bit of anxiety. I've had some people reach out to me and I said I would bring it up here because what we, you know, heard from the governor is basically stating that transmission is not happening outdoors. And I guess I was just wondering if either you or Dr. Parkinson could address some of the science behind that, like what we've learned about it, just to kind of put those worries to rest for people.
Well, I'll start while Doc has his drink. We're not contacting, the contact tracing is not coming, you know, anywhere, finding it coming back to an outdoor activities. You know, it's a lot harder for the virus to float through the air and go from one set of lungs to another set of lungs, in my opinion, you know, when you're outdoors versus in tight spaces. So just, you know, from contact tracing, I get, you know, I've had the misfortune of having to look at every case, right? All 1,559 cases. And they're not coming and being linked to outdoor events. And I think that's where we're finding it throughout the pandemic, especially, you know, obviously, if you're extremely crowded, you know, like trying to get into the gates through a baseball game or a football game, you know, that type of stuff. But outdoors has been, you know, I've been pretty consistent even last summer, saying that the beaches and bike paths are a much safer place than being inside a building. So I think that kind of logic is where they got to, where the masks are not necessarily needed or, you know, minimal effect on the outdoors. So that would be my opinion.
Dr. Parkinson, do you want to add anything to that?
Not sure if we got it all.
Just to say that, you know, the first thing is that the rate of the disease is coming down, right? So in other words, you know, before I was talking about how when it's cloudy outside, it's going to rain. And now I'm starting to, you know, go the other way around, where when the weather's good, you got a lot more leeway with what you can do, whether it's indoors or outdoors. You know, clearly, we know that the outdoors is safer. You know, again, as, you know, just to kind of give another example to what Scott was saying, you know, where are the places that we see, you know, where have we seen COVID in the community? And it's, you know, you see it get into a home and then it keeps going from there, right? Or you see it going into, you know, a building like a nursing home where, you know, there's ventilation or people going into multiple rooms kind of issues and that kind of thing. So, you know, just in terms of the reality on the ground, you know, that's what, you know, that's what people are saying. I can find you a number if you like to look at the actual risk, but it's going to be orders of magnitude lower than it is indoors.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions for Dr. Parkinson or for Scott? All right. Oh, sorry.
I'm just wondering, I thought I heard like a September or date for under 12, but is there, is there any update around research with younger children?
Right, so I actually just wanted to take a minute to talk about the, you know, vaccine and that, you know, I know that a lot of people have been, you know, eager to find out when they can get it. And some people have been more concerned about their kids. And I just want to say that, you know, I mean, the evidence is certainly in terms of how effective the vaccine is, the younger the studies have gone, the more effective the vaccine is. And also that, you know, there's no, there's no indication of any, you know, we never say never, but, you know, any kind of serious risk of the vaccine. And we do know that there's certainly a risk of the virus. And so just want to put in a plug for everybody, you know, everybody getting their vaccine. I think it's great that the schools have the clinics. And I think, you know, just in terms of, you know, if you're one of the 12 people that watched the PSA we did, the, it's, I was very relieved to, you know, when my family was able to get the vaccine. And I think that's the biggest thing I can say. And I think that, you know, if you can get, if your child's at an age where they can get it, I think that this is how it's going to, this is how people are going to be able to, you know, do things indoors without masks is when we get to that critical, you know, volume of people that are immunized. Not only that, you know, if you're immunized and if kids are doing spring or summer sports or they're at camp and there's a situation with an exposure, then, you know, you can avoid quarantine for your family. You can avoid, you know, kids having to come out of their activities. And I think we're all so, you know, acutely aware of how difficult this has been for the young people, that this is really a chance to, you know, to make that, you know, make that go away. Also wanted to put in a quick plug for June 9, from 7 to 8. There's going to be a community conversation about vaccines called "It's Worth a Shot." And I think Kelly knows a lot more about that than I do, but just again, to encourage people that have questions about vaccines. And tomorrow, we'll also be doing a forum through the schools, Zoom, for people that have specific questions about the COVID vaccine at 6 PM.
Great. Great resources. Thanks for the plug. Oh, you have a question?
Well, I was just wondering about under 12.
Oh, under 12. Is there any?
Well, I answered everything except your question.
Yeah. Any movement on research for under 12?
It's coming. And my guess is September. That's just a guess, though.
Okay. Great, thanks. And I can bring the percent around, the information about the June 9 event. Any last questions? Scott disappeared off our screen, but I know he's still there. So questions for Scott or Dr. Parkinson? Great. All right, thank you guys so much. Thanks for joining us with such wonderful news. The news keeps getting better, keep coming back.
We're getting there.
We're getting there. Exactly. Thank you. Thank you.
Get your vaccine.
Next, we have our presentation of the Juneteenth activities with guests from No Place for Hate. Who do we have joining us? Do we need to promote them?
Yes, several people are going to come on.
Who gets to promote them first?
Yes, on this one. Sandy. Kathleen, do you speak Kathleen?
Kathleen.
Kathleen Rude.
Oh, yeah.
So she's purple. You have Steve Edwards?
He just wrote.
No, she's, oh, wait, we have to get one on the next screen. You have Olivia, correct?
Oh, okay.
You have Olivia?
Yeah, she's definitely.
I'm going to see Steve Edwards.
Who's promoted or is in transition? Oh, no, there is. I got it.
Ellen Hewitt, do we have Ellen?
Yes, I see her.
All right. There's Ellen, yes, okay, great.
There's Steve. Steve is here.
Steve, okay.
And Miss Nell is here.
Okay, we have lots of people for them.
Did you say she was in segment?
No. I think we have at the line, Ryan. Except for you.
Wonderful.
All right. So I'm very excited, I'm sorry. To interview. I can hear you.
She's not here yet, no.
Kathleen has it then.
Oh, we need Kathleen, oh, she's not over there. Okay, all right.
Okay, great.
So I'm very excited to have this presentation. It's several months ago, No Place for Hate is Falmouth Public Schools. Several of us on both sides started to have the conversations about what we might be able to do this year to celebrate Juneteenth, raise awareness. And we have been meeting on a regular basis since then. And then we've added in new people, members of Falmouth Public Libraries. Ellen Hewitt has joined us from the Falmouth Education Foundation. And I'm trying to think if we have some other groups, but basically, we've been talking and we have created, I think, several activities to celebrate Juneteenth. So I don't want to keep talking. What I want to introduce is Nell Fields and Olivia White from No Place for Hate. And I believe they're going to talk to us a little bit about what Juneteenth is.
Great.
I know my colleague Olivia White is here, I don't see her. Olivia, are you with us?
Well, I don't see my picture, but I am here and I can hear everything. I don't know why I...
Down in the bottom left, maybe you can start video?
Can you hear me?
We hear you great, we just don't see your face.
Yeah, I don't know why I'm not showing, and I don't know what to do about that.
Olivia, down on the lower left-hand corner of your screen is a little camera with a red line in it, click that.
I don't even see that.
Oh, are you by chance on an iPad or a tablet?
Well, that's all right, as long as you can hear me, that...
Yes, you're right, we hear you fine.
Anyway, thank you so much for allowing us to be part of your meeting. I am the Reverend Nell Fields, I am the Minister of the Wacoite Congregational Church, I'm also on the Steering Committee of No Place For Hate. My colleague Olivia White is here. We are just so thrilled and delighted to be part of this collaboration. About a year ago in June, after the George Floyd murder, we had a safe place as a fundraiser to raise money for No Place For Hate and some other organizations that are doing racial justice work. And for No Place For Hate, from the very beginning, we wanted to make sure that the money we raised went to support the schools, specifically for the schools to develop a program for Juneteenth, and to work with the schools to roll out that program. And as all of you know, Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the end of slavery in the United States. And in the African-American community, they've long celebrated this, it just recently became, hi Olivia, just recently became a national holiday, I think, I may not get that right, I think there's like 43 states that have recognized it as a holiday, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts recently has done that. With our, in addition to meeting with Lori and her awesome team of school employees, we identified an author who will come in and talk to 4th and 5th graders about the holiday. We've worked with Lori and other officials in developing a community-wide statement. And our role here is really to, not only to work with the schools, but to help bring the community together around this commemoration. So, we're delighted to be a part of this, and Olivia and I are here to answer any questions, but I think that that's our part.
I will introduce myself. I'm, I guess I should say Dr. Olivia White, I'm a retired biology professor from University of North Texas. I'm very involved in Texas and Dixis Polity, and it really got me excited, Juneteenth is a big event in Texas. As a matter of fact, as you know, that in 1980, since 1980, for the last 41 years, that it has been a state holiday in Texas. And when I heard that here, we don't even know what Juneteenth is and what it stands for, that really surprised me, because it is big thing, because it was the Galveston, Texas, where the slaves were first freed, or they heard about being free after months, when the Emancipation Declaration had taken place. So, it is my pleasure, I am also on the Steering Committee of No Place For Hate with Nell, and we would like to see Falmouth School get involved and give recognition to Juneteenth.
Thank you, Nell, thank you, Olivia, and I would also like to add that Reverend Lieberman, Rabbi Lieberman, and Kamala Rossing has also been on our committee and been very helpful in creating our activity. So, it's been a great collaboration, it's been fun working together, like other projects, and we'll continue to that. But if we can, if we have questions, I guess if we can run through our activities and then add questions at the end, that would be great. Sandy, I'm gonna turn it over to you, we have several people here that's gonna share activities.
Great. See?
Hi, my name is Sandy Capson Bellis, and I'm the principal at the T-Ticket Elementary School, and I wanted to share our plans for an author's talk across all four elementary schools for students in grades K through 4 on June 9. Carol Boston Weatherford, author of Juneteenth Jamboree, will virtually speak to our students about her book and the holiday. Her son Jeffrey Boston Weatherford will also join the session, he is a professional illustrator, and he will share interactive spoken words and guide students through a project. So, this will be about a one-hour meeting that will, students will take place virtually through Zoom. So, in addition to that, I'm happy to say that FEF has supported a grant so that all of our classroom teachers will receive a copy of Carol Boston Weatherford's book, Juneteenth Jamboree, and each school library will also receive a copy of the book. So, we thank FEF for their continued support, and we're all really looking forward to this I think Dr. Riordan might be next.
Can I just jump in?
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi. So, Juneteenth prompts the question, how can we help make our world a place of acceptance? And at Morris Pond, our librarian, Mrs. Abbott, has found a way. So, in June, all of our 5th and all of our 6th graders will have an opportunity to experience the poetic performance of author Charles Waters. Waters is a co-author of the award-winning book, Can I Touch Your Hair: Poems of Race, Mistakes, and Friendships. His latest book is an inspiring resource for middle schoolers, Dictionary for a Better World. Organized as a dictionary, each entry presents a word such as ally, empathy, respect, and connects its meaning to acceptance and betterment for us all. Along with each poem, along with each word, excuse me, is a poem, a quote from an inspiring person, and a personal anecdote from the author, as well as a try-it prompt for school or home activity. And to make the experience that much better, we are really excited that our very generous PTO is buying a signed copy of his book for each and every one of our 5th graders. We're really excited to have Mr. Waters zoom in with us at Morris Pond in June. Thank you.
Hey, everyone, I'm Tom Bushy, I'm the principal at the Lawrence School, grades 7 and 8. And this year, we've been really fortunate to have a thriving adult and student groups with a focus on social justice and equity and diversity and inclusion. And it was easy for us to go back to those groups and to talk about some ways that we can plan an event to acknowledge and celebrate Juneteenth at the Lawrence School. So, with one or two weeks leading up to the holiday, we're gonna introduce the students to some information about the holiday, as has been stated here before. Celebrating this holiday is exciting and new to us, so we're all learning together ways that we can acknowledge this holiday. So, student groups are going to create and decorate a Juneteenth wreath, which, you know, is historically associated with life rejuvenation renewal. It's gonna be a fun project that every student group in the building will be able to participate in, either individually or with a larger group. You can look online, there are a lot of really great ideas out there, the popular ideas to create these wreaths. And like I was saying, the idea was generated by members of our student social justice group and our EDI group, Equity Diversity and Inclusion for Adults. I just want to briefly shout out to our advisors, Samantha Haywood, Abir Zain, and Dawn Valentine for helping with both groups. And lastly, we like this idea because it's something that our remote students, our in-person students and staff can participate in, and they can take these ideas and decorations home and continue the celebration beyond the school walls. Oh, and one last thing, Nell, there was one thing missing at voting this morning, I was there pretty early, and I didn't see anyone giving hugs out, I know it might be against the guidelines, but...
I'm waiting, I'm waiting till the end of May, you're the first on my list.
Dr. Teller?
Thank you. Also, for all of our students K through 12, we're gonna be introducing a poster contest. It's been wonderful to be able to partner with Dr. White, who also connected us with the Falmouth Arts Center, and Laura Recford, and also working with our foreign arts department, and I know that Mr. Edwards, our foreign arts department, is gonna speak in a moment about another opportunity as well, but also the Falmouth Public Library. So, we announced yesterday our poster contest, and it's open to all of our students in the district, and then we'll go through a review process, and then winning posters can be enlarged and printed and hung at both the Falmouth Arts Center and at the main branch of the Falmouth Public Library. And our students are also asked to give us a short artist's statement, so the picture's worth a thousand words, but just to make sure that we understand exactly what's there, they're gonna give us a short description, and then hopefully, we'll be able to take all of the winning entries and create a small brochure, where you have the picture and their statements to commemorate the event beyond June. So, thank you very much. And Mr. Edwards, anything I missed in our piece there, and the music piece as well?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Check in.
Great. Can you see me? I don't know if my video's working here.
It is, yep.
Well, unfortunate for you, I'm sorry. But, yeah, Dr. Teller did a great job. Essentially, we're inviting students to create art that represents key moments in history or celebrates what Juneteenth means to them. And as you said, we're really excited about seeing the work that students will be bringing in all over the district. Additionally, Kayla Peard is the director of bands at FHS, and the FHS Wind Ensemble is preparing Down in the River, which is a part of their spring virtual performance, but they're also gonna be sharing that particular piece with Juneteenth. Also, Teresa Jazzo, who is a music teacher at Mullen Hall, has created choreography for Lift Every Voice and Sing, and working with her first graders, they're gonna share a video of the kids moving to that music as it was choreographed. So, we're very, very excited to make this a part of Falmouth Public Schools and working in conjunction with partners in the community.
Thank you. Ryan Weber? I was gonna say, I know there's one more. Yep.
Thank you, I'm Ryan Weber, I'm the Falmouth High School...
Hold on one second, Ryan. Kids back. Everybody call it.
Thank you, Mr. Peard.
There we go.
Fortunately. So, I'm here also representing Henriette Julian, who couldn't unfortunately make it tonight, he's at a prior meeting, he's also up. So, we're very excited about STEM Fest being part of the district's Juneteenth recognition.
One second, Ryan, we can't really hear you. Let me try, did you hear this? Okay, let's try that again.
Sorry, it's really embarrassing with a tech guy, it's like issues.
The audio is just going in and out, so, okay, let's try again.
All right, if it doesn't work, I can try Plan B. Can you hear me?
Yes, that sounds good, thanks.
Okay, sorry about that. So, we're very excited about STEM Fest being a part of the district's Juneteenth recognition.
One second, Ryan, we can't really hear you. Let me try, did you hear this? Okay, let's try that again.
Sorry, it's really embarrassing with a tech guy, it's like issues.
The audio is just going in and out, so, okay, let's try again.
All right, if it doesn't work, I can try Plan B. Can you hear me?
Yes, that sounds good, thanks.
Okay, sorry about that. So, we're very excited about STEM Fest being a part of the district's Juneteenth recognition. We have students at Falmouth High School as well as some high schools who created this series of short videos, interviewing African-Americans in a variety of careers, including epidemiology, primatology, biology, ophthalmology, landscape architecture, engineering, fisheries management, science education, and much more. So, we are scheduled to premiere a live event with advice students on Thursday, June 17, starting at 7:00 PM, which will be a Zoom webinar link, but also available to be viewed live on social media and also on Channel 14 as well. So, there's been an incredible amount of community collaboration in this project, and then I'll try to include all the names of possible, Paul Mueller from Webner, who has kind of coordinated the whole project from its inception, Matt Pearson from the MBL, who's also the technical services coordinator from the Woods Hole Diversity Advisory Committee, Quanza Johnson from NOAA, who's also the academics program coordinator from the Woods Hole Diversity Advisory Committee, Bob Heller, who's a former retired teacher and the rep for the Woods Hole Science and Technology Education Partnership, Mr. Henry St. Julian, Miss Sue O'Brien from FHS, and their students from the FHS Diversity Club, Miss Chris Brothers at FHS, and her students from the Science National Honor Society, Miss Larissa Hart and her students from the CBT Graphics, and Christina Frager, who's my counterpart at Mashpee High School. So, we had students that were partnered up in groups from the Diversity Club as well as from Science National Honor Society, who had a chance to speak to scientists and conduct the interviews. My part in video is that my video to students will be taking those interviews, about 20 minutes long, and we're going to shorten them down to about five minutes, which is what will be premiering during STEM Fest. And we hope to have a live version as well, excuse me, I hope to have that live version up, the shorter version, but also the longer form up on later date up on YouTube. And if I can take one second to share my screen, we have a student-created poster to share here, that was created by FHS junior Isabella Ashton, so we hopefully will be getting these out shortly with the date. We encourage everyone to hopefully tune in and participate, we'll be doing a question and answer at the end so that we can have the scientists as well as the students be able to essentially answer questions about that.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
It's very exciting. So, and just a couple other information pieces that I want, before I introduce our next presenter. For the Carol Boston Weatherford author's visit, I wanna thank No Place For Hate and A Cousins bookstore that has come together to help support and fund the author to be here, so we thank you for that. The Brown High School Clippers for racial and social justice, are there planning a week-long awareness campaign starting June 14 up to through Juneteenth. And Andrea Burns, our director of food services, is planning to have some red food during the week of June 14 in celebration, and that'll be for all students, so we're excited about that. And next, I'd like to introduce Ellen Hewitt, the FEF, the Falmouth Education Foundation has been extremely supportive, and Ellen, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, really, I just want to say my appreciation for the collaboration. I was one of the, Beth was one of the latecomers to the committee, but welcome, could feel the spirit of collaboration around an event that's really significant to me and to many of us, and that I look forward, we look forward to finding other ways to support Juneteenth and other efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. So, any questions?
Great, that was awesome. That was wonderful. Any questions for anyone, or about anything?
Yeah, so, I have a question, first of statement, I think this is a great first year, I mean, everyone has collaborated, and I appreciate the way that you have them at every grade level, I think that's important as well. I know that there are, just anecdotally speaking, I know there are other community groups in town who will also be celebrating, so maybe this will also be a time to offer resources to families who they want to do something together as well, that's a very good start.
We have been looking for the other groups, so all of us, hopefully we can make connections, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the activities? Yeah? I guess it might be similar to what Natalie was asking, but maybe different. I think at the beginning, Reverend Fields was bringing up the idea of this community wraparound, and I guess I was wondering about, what are the other opportunities to do that? So, I think what we've outlined is right in the schools, is there anything else that we can encourage or other things that would help this committee or really involve the community?
Reverend Nell?
I'll address that. First, there, I know of at least two other entities in town that are planning a Juneteenth event. The first is the Cape Verde Museum that just recently did a soft opening, they have, and I'm not too sure exactly what it is, but 10:00 AM, they're having an activity. And then the Woods Hole Diversity Advisory Committee always does an event around June 19. We have received tremendous support from our local media, FCTV, and also the enterprise, and I know that Lori's had some conversations with the publisher as of I, and they're gonna be covering these stories as they happen, and we hope to submit to them sort of a schedule of events that are happening. Because this is our, really the first year that we've delved into it, we have no place to go but up. So, I think that as we continue to work with each other, we can involve more communities and businesses. For an example, some of the posters that the kids are doing, we can display at area businesses that maybe are located near the school. So, I think there's a, and not just around June 19, we have an opportunity to do these type of collaborations around other issues of diversity and inclusion and equity.
That's awesome, thank you. And, you know, so I, and I do appreciate, you know, this is the first time that we'll be celebrating here in Massachusetts as a state holiday, so, you know, it's not lost on me the importance of making sure that...
And, you know, so I, and I do appreciate, you know, this is the first time that we'll be celebrating here in Massachusetts as a state holiday. So, you know, it's not lost on me the importance of making sure that we're feeding information into the community as they start recognizing, oh, this is the day that we celebrate in Massachusetts now. So I just really appreciate that we didn't miss that chance to engage when people are going to be talking about it, because it will be a topic that people are talking about, since it's the first time that it's been a state holiday here. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Wonderful, well, thank you all for joining us. It was a lot to ask of you when you only had a few seconds to speak, but we really appreciate hearing all the different, all the different activities in all different grade levels.
May they stay during the next.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we could be very excited about this because No Place for Hate was very integral.
Oh, we need a source.
Sure.
Did you want to introduce one?
So, one of the activities that we talked about would be nice if we had made a statement between the town, No Place for Hate, and Falmouth Public Schools. So before you is a joint statement that I would like the school committee to consider. Signing off, I'll turn it over to you, Paul.
So because this was not, it did have to go through multiple groups because it's a joint statement, so there are a lot of people involved in its creation. So it was not in the packet, which means it wasn't available for the public to see, so I would like to read it, or I would like someone else to read it. Doesn't make any difference to me. But I do want the public to at least have an opportunity to hear, here, since it wasn't publicized.
We should make John read it, so she's reading.
Penalty, penalty for moving on. Actually, that's a good question. Do we have, I can probably work right from here. Do I have the ability to screen share?
Yes.
Okay. Give me one second, because I don't have a right file. That's a great idea, thank you for suggesting that. Anyone else faster than me? It's mine, here we go, I got it.
Is Ryan Weber still promoting?
Just give me a second to move everything. Here we go. Okay. If there's something we should read it? Okay. "Juneteenth 2021. Falmouth Public Schools in partnership with the town of Falmouth, the Select Board, and No Place for Hate Falmouth, recognize Juneteenth, June 19th, as an official day of celebration in the town of Falmouth, and commit to raising awareness of this important day in our nation's history. In 2020, Governor Baker, following the example of all but three states, recognized Juneteenth as an official state holiday. It is not a federal holiday. This year, we will commemorate the 156th anniversary of Juneteenth when the abolition of slavery was declared in Texas. June 19th marks the day when federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas in 1865 to take control of the state and ensure that all enslaved people be freed. The troops' arrival came a full two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation. While it has long been an African-American holiday, it is time for everyone to recognize and celebrate it. Juneteenth provides an opportunity to celebrate freedom while also recognizing the history and legacy of slavery in our country. Falmouth Public Schools, the town of Falmouth, the Select Board, and No Place for Hate Falmouth remain committed to fostering diversity, inclusion, and equity in all areas and levels of our community. For the first time this year, Falmouth Public Schools is initiating an ongoing district-wide major effort to educate students and staff about Juneteenth. And you can see that it will be signed by all three groups, which is why all three were considered." Yes, ma'am?
I just, I have, I love having this statement, I think it's really important, but my only question is, it's so dear to just this year, and I, you know, we want to make a commitment for the future. So I was wondering, is this something that we're planning on signing each year? Or?
I hope so.
So, I mean, that's my only question of saying it not just specifically for this year, but for in general, this is a resolution for us that we will be celebrating Juneteenth, and we have a commitment to it, instead of saying it's just for this year. That's nice.
Where does it say it's just for this year? I'm sorry, I'm stupid.
It's just called "Juneteenth 2021", and then it has, "This year we will commemorate..."
This year, for the first time this year.
I don't read it like that. I mean, I get that.
It's, the last sentence says "I'm going", the very last sentence of the document, I just don't read it like that.
Yeah, I think read it as this is the only first year, except the header, obviously, "Juneteenth 2021".
I think, I definitely see your point, but I think these types of statements are usually, it's like a press release. You know, I think it more is a press release, which is time-sensitive. So that if we wanted to have something that was more of an ongoing commitment, I think that would be a different statement. At least that's my interpretation of how these have happened before. Like we did one, like our joint statement that we did last June, was it June?
It was in the spring.
Yeah. That read also the same way. It was about our commitment to equality and equity, and that was in the wake of George Floyd and the Black Lives Matter protests. And, but I didn't take, when I read it, even though it was about the current things going on, I didn't read it as though, well, we're not going to be continuing our commitment to this. Does that make sense? I don't know if it'll be clear.
Yeah, I mean, that was, it's just that it says for the first time. That's where it is, and that it says 20 times.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think the resolution is more, I think if it has more, we are committing to this.
Right.
Something. So that's my only question about, but it is not, it's really not an important detail. It's just wanting to make this a resolution that is really impactful for the young ones this year.
Yeah, I wonder if maybe it should be, that this would be like for now, but then maybe we should continue to work together on something that feels more ongoing. Amber?
I agree with what you just said there, Kelly, about having two different pieces. And I think that second piece, we're going to be hiring a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer, and I think that person should be part of this discussion and what that looks like, what do we need to craft. And so that it might make sense to hold off on that second part and go ahead and formulate with this right now because of it being the first year and drawing attention to it. And then I have like a really minor thing.
I just want to follow up on your first thing, though, because I think that's a really good point that I hadn't thought of, that the continuation piece, that person will also be, it's not just a school employee. You know, that was a position that spanned the town, the schools, so all of that, to have them help in the longer term. Anyway, this is side plot. So what's your small, my very small thing is that Select Board is two words, and here several times, but maybe that could just be teaser part. Okay, we can fix that. One second. See it, I see it once in the first, and then once at the end.
And then also under Chair.
That. Okay, thank you, three places.
I didn't know if Noel or Olivia wanted to add anything about, we certainly didn't intend it to be a one-time statement, but how we can make sure that this is, you know, a statement moving forward. So I don't know if either one of you would like to add anything.
Well, I would, you know, and that's why, the reason why we're so excited about this particular project, because it is evidence of what we can do together as a community. I also want to say that I'm just really impressed with the schools, the principals, the teachers that you have. They've been doing this work, and even before Juneteenth, and that's really exciting. I think getting the community involved helps bring all this good work to light. And I hope that this is just the beginning of ongoing collaboration around a variety of things. And, you know, we should be making joint statements every month, every year, you know, depending on what the occasion is. But this is an example of all the good things happen when we work together. Very proud of what everybody's doing. And in fact, I was actually blown away listening to everybody, and I've heard it before, but this makes it real. So congratulations to everyone.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much.
And you?
I will add one comment, and that is, this is the pandemic year. We are doing everything in Zoom. Just imagine what all we can do next year. This is just the wedding process, so good luck and thank you.
I like that, I like that positivity. Any questions or comments or other edits, other than the ones we've already talked about? John?
Just the verbiage all through is, you know, works for the document and celebrating Juneteenth. My question is on legacy, you know, on the page, the first page, when it says, right now, in the history and the legacy of slavery in our country. I wondered, Leah mentioned the word impact. I wonder if we could make, have that be impact instead of legacy. And the reason I'm saying that is, as we make these, the efforts that we're making, within the course of it, like within some of the books that we've read, you know, without reading for the school committee, White Frailty, I do think, within the course of it, it creeps up a little bit on the notion of that presenting a case that all white people are inherently racist. And I have people, tons of people grabbing in the street and saying, what the heck do the schools do when they're saying everybody's racist? And then if you say, I'm not racist, then by saying that, well, you just admitted that you're racist, because you don't acknowledge anyone. And I think within the course of it, we actually are also overlooking and we're not trumpeting the efforts that have been made over the years to achieve equity. You know, the affirmative action programs, hiring of individuals in the police departments and in the fire departments, you know, with trying to have different score ratings and things of that nature. Myself, going back about 40 years or so, I went to Boston Latin School, a test school, and it's in the news of late now too as well. And a young man next to me in class got a score that I knew was less than the gentleman I grew up with, and it was efforts made to bridge the gap. And then we sat in a, you know, in a auditorium where he had all these, you know, Ben Frank on the wall that said sink or swim, you're going to have two and a half hours of homework, and kids were clocking out. And this is Latin school. And then at the end of the school year, this young man walking up from the lunchroom, and he comes out, he said, hey, how you doing? So what's that right there? And we walked up together, and he says, oh, that's the tutoring room. I said, what do you mean tutoring room? This is Latin, sink or swim. And he said, I said, how'd you find out about that? He goes, oh, it was the first day of school. They put me in a program for days a week. And it was it, so there are efforts that have been made. And I think we should trumpet those efforts and say, and not ignore those efforts that were made over the years. What in the course of that too is, you know, the danger I find too is when we say statements of, not necessarily this statement, obviously celebrating the abolition and emancipation proclamation and moving forward, but to the kid who is being said on the, you know, saying that you're not going to be able to achieve something because the system's rigged against you. I'd rather them saying, I have the chance, and then try to adjust things within the system as well, like we are trying to do. But when somebody says in the beginning of White Frailty, when it says, white people, you know, there was a sentence there where it says, white people almost seem human. It's really kind of scary that there were just, with some of this dynamic that we're just, you know, purporting to folks. With that said, I think history and impact would free a reading. I'd be all for, and I'm all for all of these programs, but I just, I also think the efforts that have been made, you know, including the teachers over the years who had a lot of empathy to cast a sweeping thing against them and say, you haven't had empathy, and we're going to teach it out of that empathy. So I'm just saying we should move forward and celebrate Juneteenth, but also within the course of that, you know, also acknowledge the strides we've made too. Thank you.
I'm still thinking, does anybody have any thoughts on that replacement?
My thought is that legacy stands, and there's so much in the joint statement that we're not going to go down that rabbit hole, but I think that legacy of slavery is very relevant to this statement. I know that many people worked hard to craft this statement, and it is a legacy of slavery and everything else we can say for another time.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, oh, sorry, Adri, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree, and I also with what Natalie is saying. I think that, I don't agree with dropping the word legacy, but adding the word impact wouldn't harm the statement if it said recognizing the history, legacy, and impact of slavery in our country. Because they do address, there are impacts of that that come out of it. So I can see it as an addition, but not as a replacement.
Yeah, that's, that's very important. Oh, sorry, listen to.
I actually was trying to formulate Andrea's words in my head, but she did it ever so eloquently, I'm sure, and I could have. But I couldn't agree more. I think that impact is a powerful word, and I really think that that is an important word in here. But I also think that legacy is also very important as well. So I agree with Andrea on how it should be written more, our suggestion or my suggestion, but I really, I really like the word impact, because I think that it is extraordinarily impactful.
You're not supposed to use the word in the definition.
I know, I'm like, really?
I'm sorry, that was like my strength. There's a great teacher yelling at me.
I know.
So the piece that I was trying to work out of my brain, because I hear impact as the historical impact, whereas I hear legacy and I think of the remnants, right?
And ongoing as well.
Right. And so I was trying to make those pieces work for me, because also it already says the history, which to me, the history and the impact, I understand the attempt to find, you know, compromise and common space, and I totally appreciate that, but I was trying to work through whether or not we were being repetitive. Because when I hear impact, I'm thinking the previous impact, whereas legacy is talking about what's happening still.
Can I?
Yes, please.
I actually think of impact as now.
Oh, I still have time, yeah.
Historically, what's happened. But I think, I think legacy is a very strong word, and we cannot get rid of that.
No, I know, I know, I know.
But I do, I think that, I think of impact as more today. We have, we have this impact, we have history, we have legacy, and we have impact.
Okay.
And I kind of find that it works really nicely, those three.
Yes, I can totally appreciate it. It's just funny the way that you define it in your, how a word works in your mind. Are you writing it down, or are you just posing?
No, I actually, I agree with the legacy.
Okay.
I think the legacy is absolutely pretty imaginative, sorry. I do have to have that. Impact, solid. I don't kick it away, but you can't take a legacy out.
No, okay. Well, thank you all for helping me work through it too. So how, are there any other edits that we want to make besides that correction and adding impact into the, into that phrase? Any other edits? Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to approve the joint statement with the correction of Select Board and the addition of impact?
He's picking up one other. Oh, just a district-wide, is this, is this supposed to be capitalized there?
In reference to Falmouth Public Schools.
So it would, it would, okay, right. Not just as we write, just making sure that we have all that.
Yeah, now you have to make the motion, because I don't want to say all of it.
Oh, okay. I am making a motion to approve the joint statement, on the Juneteenth joint statement, with the addition of impact in the last sentence on page one.
And the three Select Words.
The changing of Select Board into two words.
Perfect.
Okay.
Andrea's got the second. And any last discussion?
I just have one.
Oh, yeah.
Process piece. So we made a couple of changes, and we're the first ones. It looks like working on the documents. Are we the first?
You are. And I am very confident that there'll be no, no issue with that.
If there are any other tweaks, do we need to re-bote it?
Well, it depends on how you make your motion. Oh, but all groups have seen the statement and have signed up on it verbally.
Okay. I think we can accept that if there's like, spelling is sick or something, we would accept that. But if there's content changes, I think we have to come back. Yeah, that's a fair question.
Then can we amend the motion to say with approval of the other two groups to take any more impact? That's the only philosophical change that.
I think we can, but I don't think we have to, because they haven't taken it up yet.
It'll be on their agenda on May.
So what's the second on this version?
Yes, yes. And of course, we have no place for hate here. I guess we should ask now and.
Yeah, would you like to weigh? Oh, wait, I couldn't see. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I feel confident that I will be, I think that would be a good addition.
I'm, I'm fine with that language, Olivia. Are you okay with the addition of impact? Yeah. And, and thank you for the thoughtful discussion.
Thanks for bringing it to us. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Just got an abstention.
And it passes with one abstention. Great. It's so nice to vote like normal people. Oh my gosh, it feels so great.
It's nice to have diversity of opinion too as well.
Always. Next, we have superintendent's update.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys. You're welcome to stay. Come on.
So.
Before we start, just, I think this is such a wonderful thing that Common has done. Is there a way that maybe, that Kelly, you can share it with other school committees or other communities around this joint statement?
I'm sure we could. It's also probably gonna be the paper, I would think.
I would hope so.
I would hope so too. So, yeah.
It's a nature. It's it.
Feel free. Share it. Share with the people.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You may want to wait until they prove it.
Yeah, no, I like it.
Yeah, I think we should wait until the other group to prove it. But, yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
So last school committee meeting, Andrea had asked if we were, have any activities planned around.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt. It was like, we're gonna feel this way.
I think she's waiting to buy.
Oh, bye. Bye. Thank you for being here.
And I think you can move everyone else back to. Okay, so what I, and you had mentioned the Out for Safe Schools training, and I just wanted to give an update. We have now all our, the staff at all of our schools trained, except for two schools. And so we're looking through, Julie Williams-Tankham is actually providing the training at our schools. And it's, it's been well received. And just a little bit about the training is really, it's helping all of our students feel safe. And as you had said last week, or PhD, I guess, that when our students see that we're wearing our badge, they know that they have a safe adult to go to. And I, and it's part of the training. It's not an expectation that everyone wears it, but it is. So after you've had the training, you can request to have one so that you can wear that for the students. And so I just, I'm really pleased that we're able to provide the training for all of our schools. So along with that, last year, the Gay Straight Alliance Group at Lawrence School created a sign that they were in support of the LGBTQ community. And the signs were very popular all over town. There are people that tell me they still, they kept their sign and, and they can't wait. So, and as the admin team talked, we really, we love the Lawrence School sign, but we really wanted to stay found in public schools. And we wanted to have some other community members, almost similar to what you brought up before, how can we kind of reach out? And so No Place for Hate is very excited about joining us on the signs. And we have a couple other groups that we are waiting to hear from. So you'll see new signs this year in the month of June that is supporting our LGBTQ community. There are activities planned in each of the buildings. Those are underway and being planned. So I would like to be able to continue that update at a future meeting, just to share what's happening in the schools for Pride Month.
Great.
So thank you.
Any questions for, are there any questions about that one? Oh, go ahead.
Not really a question, but a comment that during the month of June, it might be an opportunity for anybody here on school committee who wants to wear something or display something to also celebrate Pride Month. You know, we wear our new No Duff t-shirts. Maybe there's another t-shirt you have or something you want to do and just kind of keep it optional. But since we'll be meeting first of the June, it gives us an opportunity to do that.
I'm highly excited. We can absolutely, if the school committee would like to have the training as well, we could actually provide that opportunity.
That was actually a good question. I was gonna ask, is there something that we can do? That would be great. I love that.
All right, we'll figure that out.
Leah's got one too.
In thinking about, you know, the signs or the posters, I just think it would be great to have them all the time. So, you know, if, I understand, you know, we're making it for Pride Month, but it is something that we live by every single day. So maybe highlighting some aspects of them in the future, but having them in our schools all the time is really important.
Great. With an agreement. All right, so the next, we have a new school resource officer. And so we have three people that applied for the job, and it was a very tough decision because all three were extremely qualified. But Chief Dunn and his committee has appointed Officer Tim Grant as our new school resource officer. Also should congratulate, I think we, when we found out that Ryan Hurt was promoted to sergeant, I think we said before, but it's another opportunity that, just congratulations to Ryan. He was a great SRI, and he is still going to be involved and also see as part of this, David's a sergeant, the connections of the schools and the SRI. So we get to keep Ryan, we get a new person too. So excited about that.
I just had some.
I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about Tim Grant, his background, his time with the.
Where's everybody on this? We'll come back to that. So. Yeah.
We could ask him, absolutely ask him to come on. He's been with, he's been with the Falmouth Police Department. And I want to say six years. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna remember everything. He has been involved in every training that they offer. He's, so he's well-trained. He's, it was quite impressive. I can't wait to get to know him as well. So maybe we can invite him to come. If you guys have a question. All right, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt your question.
I'm wondering about the process for hiring. Are the schools involved in deciding who this?
So it is like, so I did sit in on the interview process, but it was to get to know. There were other officers in the, that was actually doing the interviews. I actually got to sit in to meet them. But again, when we were finished, I knew that we were going to be well taken care of with any of the candidates. They were all just top-notch candidates. So we're so lucky to have the opportunity. And we had so many people that actually wanted to be an SRI in public schools. So that was exciting. But the final decision was Chief Dunn.
Okay. Any other ones? Okay. Sorry, I don't see you guys.
Okay, so I just, an update on the outdoor learning. We have, we have six of the seven tents up now at our schools. We have one more coming up this Saturday at Mullen Hall, and that'll be our final one. We started out when we put up the first tent at Falmouth High School. It took about five and a half hours. They are going up now around two hours.
Yeah.
So things gotten really good.
Need to lend them out.
I'd like to give a shout out to the supervisors that continue to come every week. John Bedell, Christian Val William, Herfoot, and John Ublanc. They're there. They absolutely are guiding all the volunteers, and there's twenty-plus volunteers that come out to help. Right now, they've had two hundred and twenty volunteer hours across approximately thirty people that have been coming out on Saturdays. And it is their goal, the outdoor classroom, outdoor learning community, many, that they are, the goal is to finish the fundraising, so a second tent can be offered to the schools. And I'm hearing that teachers and students alike are really excited about the tents and finding ways to use them. So we're excited about that.
You feel that way even more if it keeps getting hot.
And that's why I think.
Any other last questions about? Okay. Next up, we have our. Next is the Acting on the Carousel Light License to Mullen Hall grounds for 2021. I'm way at the back, if you're looking for it. Tara, go ahead, Tara.
I was gonna make the motion first in order to discuss it, right?
Right?
Yes.
Okay. Do it, Sarah.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the license for the carousel light at Mullen Hall grounds for 2021.
Pass that second. And any comments or questions about it?
Was there any other, were there discussions of potentially raising the P or slash alcohol in my product to ten percent of what they make for that?
I don't know if you have some statements for it or not, and I see that choice up here. But it was my understanding that you were hoping to have a conversation and not have it in here, right? Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't misunderstand you.
Well, I would have motioned that I didn't think we could get the support. I don't want to waste the committee's time.
I didn't have those conversations. And they sort of, and they still could, because it's not fair at this point.
I was hoping that it would be maybe volunteered from carousel folks that hopefully they might have said, yeah, that sounds like a reasonable thing, but it must not constitute.
And the other piece was the request that Rosa had made at the end to actually reference our policy about alcohol and smoking on school grounds. So that was the other, the change. But that is the difference between the one you saw previous and this one. Um. Pardon me? Okay, sorry. Any other questions or comments? We don't have the insurance finder on file yet, but it's usually, this, obviously if you don't have the insurance. Yes, contract. It does say. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second and a last discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Abstention.
And it passes with one abstention.
Next. I guess John was referencing, it's a donation.
It is, yeah.
Okay, so the donation first.
And it was calculated years back based on an idea of so many cents per ride. And so John's comment was, I mean, a higher incentive for ride, right? That was my.
Well, it ended up being, it ended up being three percent of the year. The one year, we got $2,000, but we made $52,000 that translated to three percent. So I was just thinking, ten percent would seem more fair to me with the amount of quick graphic and all that sort of thing.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, that it's a donation, not a thing that we would negotiate.
No, it's more a conversation about how they calculate how much they're donating. Yeah. Next up, we have Acting on an Unrandom Agreement Between Falmouth Food Service Union and Falmouth School Committee. We did have the opportunity to meet an executive session to review the contract. Are there, well, first, is there a motion to approve the contract? I'm a motion to approve the food service, the Falmouth Food Service and Falmouth School Committee contract. Is there a second? So let's go to the second. Okay, any comments or discussion about this one? Oh, that's right. We do approve. Thank you. So the motion would actually be to approve the contract with the edit under holidays to read ten full-day holidays and two half-day holidays. Thank you for catching that. We still go with that as your motion. That's me, Lisa.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions on correcting that error? All right, great. All in favor of approving the contract with New Food Service and School Committee?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Any extensions? And so that is approved, yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm gonna write it all. Routine business. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our May the fourth meeting? I will. I couldn't help myself. What's the other motion? And is there a second? And now the second. Any edits or corrections? Okay. All in favor of approving the May fourth minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Abstention.
And John with one abstention, it passes. And next is approving our minutes from our May eleventh meetings. In relation to approve May eleventh?
Yeah.
In relation to approve the May eleventh minutes. And a second? I'll do it. And I'll still have a second. Any comments or questions to this one? Great. All in favor of approving May eleventh minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? John with an abstention, so that will pass as well. Oh my gosh. I'm not used to moving so quickly. And, okay, committee have a report? Anyone have any reports, requests, anything going on on that?
So just an update on, just a follow-up on our discussion with the Wapahana tribe that they came to the school committee meeting on the fourth. It was a wonderful and playful, amazing opportunity. And last week, Andrea, Terry, and I, that was the group, so we begin the process for the land acknowledgement process for the South Hook Schools. They talked through, they helped us, and they talked through the language and the meaning behind it and ways that we can use it. So Terry, Andrea, I went this morning to sort of begin that process. Our next steps, we're gonna go back to the larger committee for their review and then ultimately bring it back to school committee for approval.
Amazing. Great. Thank you so much. Thanks, guys. Andrea, was that your update as well? No. Terry?
It's my weekly update. Every Thursday night, we still meet, so this is from history. Not a group, and you've heard, oh, what am I doing? You heard that there was a soft opening, you know, for this at the Emerald House. So it's looking more and more like, I don't want to quote the date, June twenty-fifth, May, but I'll firm that up for an open to the public, so.
Great. Thanks. Andrea, you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to update that where I was able to come to the most recent VITX Board Directors Meeting. And the really special, amazing news that we are able to discuss there is that some of the one-to-one volunteer opportunities, mentoring, some of the academic coaching and tutoring. is that some of the one-to-one volunteer opportunities, mentoring, some of the academic coaching and tutoring is able to happen between now and end of the school year, outdoor, following all of the normal precautions that we've put in place. But it's a huge step and we've heard things both from the mentors and some of the feedback from mentees about how excited they are to be able to see their special people in their schools.
That's great, yeah. Really nice. John, did you have something?
Yeah, just with the Cape Cod Collaborative, so as Terry had mentioned, I'm wrapping up there. So we'll need the Falmouth representative and it's a great organization with multiple layers to it with regards to the Waypoint Academy Star Program, the ASLP program, the bus line, you know, that's not to be underrated to give, give all of the districts a competitive bus bidding process. But on the, on the note of some activity that's been happening, the ASLP program unfortunately needed to not, is not going to be a residential component of it this year in this maritime. There is 20-plus family kits that had achieved the ASLP program. Let me say on behalf of the collaborative, congratulations to those students, it's a great achievement. And there was a Zoom call today with 150 people participating in a Zoom call where the ASLP folks, past maritime collaborative, all collectively are working with the parents to come up with alternatives. It's going to be a two-week alternative program that's non-residential, but it still will happen. So again, for those students and their families, congratulations. And we're doing all, now, now I have to say they. The collaborative is doing all it can as it's national maritime to make it happen for those students and their families. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other updates? I only had two. One is to just announce that the signed MOA addendum that we approved at the last meeting was signed by FBA and so that's completely finalized. And then the second piece is to make sure that if you're going to join the graduation celebrations at the high school, to make sure you reply and say that you're coming to school committee.
Speaking of graduation, I would just like to say out loud that I've always attended graduation. However, my daughter is in a dance performance that morning at Turning Point and I will be unable to attend. And it is a, you know, it's tugs because I really, really want to be there because I love to see the kids, especially after last year and the speeches always get me every single time because I know I'm going to blink and I ain't going to be there. So I, please know that I am there with you in spirit, in solidarity with you. But happily, motherhood comes this time.
Fair enough, fair enough. Any last things? Okay. I'll make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. The Department of Labor Relations, having these discussions in open session may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's position and it is anticipated that the school committee will not return to open session. Is there a second? I'm going to second that if Rosa has it. We can just all in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or objections? Great, yes. All right, we will move to executive session. Thanks, everybody, for joining us.